Then we'll reconvene this meeting at Dublin City Council, September 8th meeting of Dublin City Council. And before we get started this evening, I'd like to acknowledge that this Thursday, September 11th is Patriot Day in our country. It's a day set aside to remember those who were injured or died following the terrorist attacks on the United States in 2001. There are many ways to observe the solemnness of this day, including displaying the American flag, offering a moment of silence at 8:46 a.m., visiting memorials, and participating in community service projects. On this day, it's also important to remember the true American heroes, those who carried the U.S. mantle of resilience on that day and on many since. These include our veterans and the servicemen and women who continue to preserve our freedoms, and also our first responders who remind us that no matter what the situation is on the front line, they will be there to protect us. In recognition of our first responders, the Dublin Entrepreneurial Centre will be hosting the Dublin Police and Washington Township Fire Department for lunch on Thursday to show appreciation for their valiant service. However, each and every one of you choose to observe the day, I hope that you will remember the strength that emerged in our country and community following those tragic events that occurred now more than a dozen years ago. Out of that devastation, we were reminded of what bonds us as Americans and those that we've worked together. And I'd like to ask Rick and John, who represent us as veterans here in council, to lead us in a pledge now. Thank you.
(inaudible)
We have a couple of proclamations here this evening. We have Kathleen Spillman Kramer, Columbus Chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution. If you'd like to come forward. Welcome. I'll read this for you here now, and you may have a few comments to make afterwards. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law, and whereas September 17th, 2014 marks the 227th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through September 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Michael H. Keenan, Mayor of Dublin, on behalf of Dublin City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through September 23rd as Constitution Week in the city of Dublin, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideas embraced by the framers of the Constitution in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. And welcome. Thank you.
Can we get a picture?
We can definitely get a picture. You want to say a few words?
Yes, yes, I do. I want to thank you for the proclamation. It's very nice of you to do that. Fortunately, this year, we're going to have five different proclamations from the city council and from of Gersity, Hilliard, Dublin, and then Columbus, and the Franklin County Commissioners as well. We'll sign one tomorrow. This is a very important part of our activity in the community, and we just really appreciate the recognition from the different cities for that. Our chapter was formed in 1899, and next year, we'll be celebrating our 115th year here in Columbus. So we do lots of good things with the veterans and with historical preservation, patriotism, and education. So we're out there, we're just kind of quiet about it.
Thank you very much. My sister-in-law, Carolyn Jones, is very active in the Daughters of the American Revolution. I know she gets to DC quite often through your conventions and very, very active. It's important work that you do, and thank you. Want to get a quick picture?
Yes.
No? Here, let me go back here and where do you want this?
Nancy and Debbie, if you want to come forward.
Thank you.
I saw you scrambling.
We were looking. We have another proclamation here. Ladies, thank you for coming out tonight. I'll read this. Whereas hunger and poverty are issues of grave concern in the United States and the state of Ohio, and whereas raising awareness about the need to combat hunger in every part of our state and to provide additional resources for the citizens of Dublin is critical, and whereas the city of Dublin is committed to working with the Mid-Ohio Food Bank and the Dublin Food Pantry in educating people about the role and importance of food banks in addressing hunger and raising awareness of the need to devote more resources and attention to hunger issues, and whereas each month, 240 households rely on food provided by the Dublin Food Pantry, and whereas the Dublin Food Pantry distributed more than 230,000 pounds of food in 2013, thereby providing food for more than 150,000 meals for Dublin Food Pantry clients, and whereas food banks across the state will promote numerous events throughout the month of September to bring awareness and attention to encourage involvement in efforts to end hunger in local communities, now therefore, I, Michael H. Keenan, Mayor of Dublin, on behalf of Dublin City Council, do hereby proclaim September 2014 as Hunger Action Month in the city of Dublin, and encourage all citizens to support the mission of the Dublin Food Pantry and the Mid-Ohio Food Bank. Ladies, we appreciate you coming out. We know all the good work that you do, and I know you're serving a lot of families right here in Dublin, so would somebody like to say a few words?
My name's Debbie Rogan, and I'm representing the Board of Directors of the Dublin Food Pantry. So on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank all of you for the proclamation. The mission of the Dublin Food Pantry is to ensure that no one in our community goes hungry, and as Mike read in the proclamation, we're now serving about 240 meals a month, 240 families a month. Our numbers keep going up and up. Luckily, the support from our community keeps going up and up. It's amazing, the support that we get from our corporate community, from the grocery stores, and from individuals. The donations at the Dublin Irish Festival this year were a record number of donations, thanks in part to the weather, thanks in part to all the families that came Sunday morning and brought canned goods. Those goods will feed our families for several months. Stacking our shelves is not an easy thing to do, so all the volunteers that come out every shopping day, which is three days a week for the needy families, we could not survive without all of the generosity from our community and from all the volunteers. So thank you very much for the proclamation.
Say a few words as well?
Yes, I just want to thank you on behalf of all the families that I see every week that would love to be here to thank you and don't have that opportunity. I'm very fortunate to get to see them and to work with them. Dublin, as Debbie says, extremely, extremely generous community. Every segment of the community, from little daisies all the way up through high school students, to rotary, to kuanas, to lions, all the corporations, it's really amazing. In fact, we had a little five-year-old who didn't get birthday presents but brought in canned goods, five-year-old. So we do want to thank you for the leadership, the council's leadership, in showing this community the way to help our citizens. I just want to mention now that the most increase that we're seeing is in the working poor. These families are working, sometimes one and two jobs. And we're also seeing an increase in the elderly, who thought that their money would last, and it isn't, and also an increase in the refugees that are seeking freedom here. So thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you again. Okay, I see we have a special presentation this evening. David Royer, CEO of Adam.
Yes, sir.
Welcome.
Hello. Good morning, or good afternoon, or good evening, I guess it is. Yes, thank you for allowing me to be here. First, if I could just take a moment to thank all of you for all you do. As a resident of the city of Dublin, I know how hard you're working to make our life a great, just a great place to live. This place is wonderful. No matter when I travel or where I travel, I try to tell people that central Ohio is the best-kept secret in the United States. So thank you for everything you do for me and my family. I appreciate that very much. I am, I serve as the Chief Executive Officer of the Alcohol, Drug, and Mental Health Board of Franklin County. I want to go over just a couple of slides to remind you about what we do, but then specifically talk to you about an art mural initiative that we're doing with the Club and Dublin Arts Council. Our job is to plan, fund, and evaluate, yes, the planned, fund, and evaluate for mental health and addiction services. We do that with nearly 35 nonprofits throughout the county, and I might mention that here in Dublin, we've had a long historic relationship with Dublin Counseling Services, Centerra, led by Julie Irwin Rinaldi. So we continue to support Dublin Counseling in their mission to provide behavioral health services here in the greater Dublin area. So through this process, we do the funding, the planning, and evaluation. We do that through funding. The bulk of that funding is through the local levy. It's a 2.2 mil levy that was passed in 2005. It is a 10-year levy, and as you can see in the revenues, without really the support of whether it's Dublin or the rest of Franklin County, we could not achieve some of the things that we're trying to do in serving the people of Franklin County. The, our focus from our system is obviously mental health services, substance abuse services. Our most pressing issue that we're confronting is the issue of opiate use and heroin addiction prevention. We have prevention programs. I might mention that just this past, I believe it was spring, we did a partnership with Dublin City Schools and Centerra. We allocated $300,000 to begin a new initiative for mental health, early intervention and treatment referral. We're doing this throughout the Franklin County with, I think we're up to almost 13 suburban school districts, at an annual cost of a little over $3.5 million. Some of the tragedies that we've experienced has told us that we need to do a better job at reaching out with our school districts to ensure that there's a mental health presence within those districts. Housing is one of the most pressing needs for people with severe and persistent mental illnesses, as well as peer supports, which is an important part of sustaining people with severe persistent mental illnesses in the community. And finally, from a community education perspective, it's about both outreach, but it's also about community development, and that's what I'm here about this evening. Again, Centerra up there, you can see, these are some of the providers that we do business with on a day-to-day basis, Nationwide Children's, Compteur, Mary Haven. Tonight, I'm here to talk to you a little bit about this recovery and arts mural project that we've undertaken in the past couple of years. One of the things that we want to try to do is, so much of, unfortunately, so much of what we do is illness-based, if you will, and we think it's very important that we also focus on the aspects of mental health, not just mental illness. And so we've been working with the city of Columbus. We've just finished a project here that I'm going to show you, a little clip from a project we just completed in Westerville this last month, and to talk a little bit about what we're hoping to do here in Dublin. Oh, okay. No?
From Central Ohio's News Leader, this is TED TV News at 11. The city unveiled this giant mural tonight along State Street near the library. It's located along a popular bike path. It reads, "A healthy community starts with you. Create your own path."
It's a message of hopefulness, that whether you're a young kid carving your way through elementary school, or whether you're a senior citizen, you always have the opportunity to continue to create your own path in life.
The Alcohol, Drug, and Mental Health Board of Franklin County helped make this mural possible. They're planning another one in Dublin for the spring.
Hopefully, the mural is much more impressive than the spokesperson. With that, let me just talk a little bit about the mural process. We have been working with the Dublin Arts Council because of the strong history and traditions of supporting art here in the city of Dublin. One of the great virtues of our good city is the fact that we embrace public art, and it's an important aspect to quality of life. We also believe that art plays an important role in the therapeutic process. One of the things we've learned over time is the power of art and music therapies in assisting people recovering from mental illnesses such as depression, as well as long-term chronic illnesses like schizophrenia. This is the process that we go through. We do field research, partner agreements, we look at locations, then we begin the collaborative process on community outreach. We'll go through a conceptual design process, and then obviously, we asked the city to sign off on anything that we'd like to do. We hold then community painting, and then obviously, there's ongoing engagement throughout the process. We do this, and we're proposing to do this with the Dublin Arts Council and alternatives, and we're hoping that we can recruit Dublin Counseling Centers as well as the ACT Coalition, the Substance Abuse Coalition, as we go through this process. As it's related to location, we're proposing that we would be doing a mural in the tunnel near Belly Elementary, and with the hopes that we can do this sometime in the spring or summer of 2015. The way we want to kind of get this underway is to begin the community engagement process with a group exhibition of local artists in recovery. This arts exhibit would be held, and the celebration will be held on October 7th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. It will feature, and I believe we're in the process of making that collection now, of local artists in recovery, whether it's from substance abuse, addictions, or mental illness. So tonight, we're really here just to brief you about that process. Hopefully, we can garner your support for this process. It is a community engagement process. And then I'd like to turn it over. David, would you like to say a few words from the Dublin Arts Council perspective?
Thanks, David. Well, we appreciate your willingness to collaborate on not just the exhibition, but also the mural in general, the whole process. At Dublin Arts Council, as council knows, we've been geared up to work on social causes and art, and so working with the Down Syndrome community recently, over the past three years, also working on a project coming up in the summer of 2015, working with Vietnam veterans. We're gearing up more in this type of vein of programming. So when Alicia and David came to us and talked about creating a mural, we thought it was a perfect addition to our programming. Eliza Ho, who is with Alternative, was not able to be here tonight, but I just wanted to mention her goals for the exhibition which is coming up, which David has mentioned, is sort of the start of the dialogue for this process. So her idea was to deepen the understanding of how art contributes to the recovery of the artist and the larger community, and open up a conversation so that the community can be more inclusive of issues in mental health and addiction. So again, the exhibition opens on October 7th from 6:00 to 8:00. We have 15 incredible artists that are participating with some amazing talent of those struggling with addiction. So that's what I'd have to say.
Thank you.
We thank you both for your important work, and I know you've been involved in the community here, formerly Dublin Counseling Center, and we thank you for all that and your efforts too, David. Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
We don't need to take any action, Marcia, of any kind? Okay. We also have a 2015 major transportation project update, Mandy Bishop, GPD Group, who's the consultant for Bridge Street District, and our own Megan Callahan.
The city of Dublin has been advancing the planning and design for multiple transportation projects throughout the city for several years now. A couple of these projects are the largest and most significant transportation improvement projects in Dublin's history. We're excited to finally be at a point where we can start talking about construction now. We know there's a lot of anticipation out there, and we're getting more and more questions, so we wanted to come tonight to share the information that we know at this point in time, based on the information that we have. Our goal is to get the word out, keep everybody informed, be proactive, and get out ahead of any questions that may arise. It's important to note that the information that's being presented tonight is not final. We're in the midst of designing several of the projects that we'll be talking about, and therefore, we don't have all the answers to everybody's questions, but like I said, we're here to get the information out and share what we do know. There's going to be lots more information and details to share as we continue with the design of the projects, and as we get closer and closer to finalizing the construction plans and get ready to sell the projects. On the map up on the screen, we have indicated which projects we're going to be focusing the discussion on tonight, as these are the major projects that are planned for 2015. ODOT's 27033 Interchange Improvement Project will greatly improve safety and reduce congestion. It's a project the community's worked very hard for quite a while now. We've collaborated with other partners in the region, and we've all worked hard to see this project come to fruition, and it's finally here. It's one that's really going to help Dublin become more accessible than ever. The State Route 161 and Riverside Drive intersection improvement project, which we'll construct a roundabout at this intersection, will also improve safety and reduce congestion. The Riverside Drive realignment will tie into that roundabout, and it'll provide future opportunities for park development along the river. The Dublin Road South Shared Use Path is on here because it will provide very important connectivity for bikes, and we'll explain how that comes into the picture in terms of maintenance of traffic later on in the presentation. And then lastly, there's planned some work to be occurring up at the Hard Road area of Sawmill, and those projects up there are in partnership with ODOT and the city of Columbus to help reduce congestion up in that area as well. So as you can see, all these projects have great purpose and will greatly improve the transportation flow around the city. Also, all of these projects have enhancement benefits or aesthetics that will be added to the region. So from this slide, you can see that various roads would be impacted by these projects as they would serve as detours for these various projects. So up there, we have highlighted, we have France, Tuttle, Emerald, Sawmill, Avery, and then there's several others. Typically, when we construct transportation projects in Dublin, we're looking at a localized project that impacts a small, specific area of the city. Several months ago, as we're taking a look at the projects that are planned to occur in 2015, we started realizing that due to the complexity of these projects all occurring at the same time, the overlapping maintenance of traffic that had been considered, there's going to be wide-range traffic impacts citywide. Therefore, we decided to retain expert program management and construction scheduling consultants to evaluate these overlapping impacts and produce detailed construction schedules and maintenance of traffic plans from a programmatic perspective, in addition to the looks that the designers are taking on each of the individual projects. We really needed to take a global overarching look at things. So the consultant team that we retained includes Mandy Bishop with GPD Group and Dan Wise with Hill International there here in the audience. Mandy's going to be presenting next. They have been gathering the construction schedules that existed for the various projects that had been planned, and they're working to refine and further develop those construction schedules into very detailed critical path method schedules like what you see up there. We don't expect you to be able to read every word, but the idea is that they're really delving into the details and trying to determine exactly how all these projects will interface with each other. So based on current planned schedules, based on the information we know now, it's become apparent that the projects are anticipated to have overlapping closures and reduced conditions during a period of greatest impact, which can be indicated by that gray column there. And that period of greatest impact that we've identified thus far occurs between June 8th, early June, through late October of 15. So with that, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Mandy Bishop of GPD Group, and she's going to delve into the details for each of the projects.
Good evening. Thanks, Megan, for that introduction. Over the last few months, we have got more information on the I-270 US-33 project. We have, the maintenance of traffic has become more clear and established at this point. Now, the program management team knows what the impacts are, and we're working on how best to schedule and build the other projects that the city has planned. The design for the Riverside Drive realignment project, as well as the State Route 161 roundabout, are being advanced so that construction can begin as early as March of 2015. In addition, staff has continued to develop the Dublin Road South Shared Use Path, as well as the Hard and Sawmill Road intersection and the Hard Road widening projects. Due to these projects, traffic in the area will be greatly reduced, and although we are in the early stages of final design for the roundabout and Riverside Drive realignment, this is a fact that will not likely change. I'd like to kick off our presentation with an overview of the I-270 US-33 Interchange Improvement Project, as this is the project that will have the most impact to the region, and the plans are completed. They were filed last week with ODOT. For those of you in the room that are not close to this project, this interchange area is one of the top 30 urban freeway crash locations in the state. The interchange is nearly 50 years old and was not designed to support the tremendous growth that has occurred in the region. The I-270 US-33 Interchange Improvement is a three-year project, with most of the work occurring in the first two years. The third year will focus on pavement planning, getting the final surface course, the striping, as well as the aesthetic improvements in place. Construction is anticipated to begin in early March of 2015, and the first construction activity that everyone will notice will be the improvement of shoulders and the installation of median crossovers for future phases of traffic. As Megan mentioned, Phases 2A and 2B involve the closure of the US-33 bridges over I-270, and this is anticipated to occur not before the end of the Memorial Termit in 2015, so June 8th, 2015, through late March of 2015 is when these closures are anticipated to occur. I'd like to play a short video, if I may, that shows the interchange development. I'm just going to play the first 30 seconds of this video. Basically, it shows the existing interchange as it transitions through construction and the construction phasing into its final condition. the construction phasing into its final condition. I just want to give you a little bit of a clip. It's about a four-minute video. The video is actually being developed and will include narrative and will show the construction phasing, similar to what we did with the 161 and Riverside Drive video, so that there's more public information and it shows how the construction phasing and sequencing will occur.
Can you bring the map back up with a pointer and just kind of walk us through the, you know, how that's going to change the flyover? I know there's going to be additional lanes on both sides of 33 from Avery-Mirfield. What comes first? Just a real brief executive overview.
This is phase 2A when the bridge closures occur. And the work that is occurring is actually on the westbound bridges, as well as the ramps and the two bridges over here. The first two phases are mainly focused in getting the bridges reconstructed in June, from June, approximately June 8th through the end of October of 2015. As this transitions, you'll actually see the maintenance of traffic switch to the newly constructed bridge. It has moved over, and now the second phase is under construction. You won't see the flyovers until a future phase here.
Well, the ramp coming from Hilliard, is that metro to the right of the bottom right-hand of the screen?
Correct.
Right there? So, if you're coming from Hilliard and you're going to go to downtown Dublin, we're going to exit right there. Is there a traffic light here somewhere?
There's going to be a traffic signal.
Show me where that is.
Right here.
Okay. So, that will control traffic exiting to get into downtown Dublin?
My understanding is it will not control the ramp. It will control the through traffic.
The through traffic coming from Marysville 33?
Correct.
Eastbound?
Correct.
Okay. And then there'll be, on the upper left-hand side, coming from Worthington to go to Marysville, there will be one dedicated lane that will stay on the right-hand side, and actually you can stay there and exit Avery-Mirfield. There'll be a second exit, second lane that will allow you to merge onto 33 and continue westbound into Marysville. Is that accurate?
Right. And that's the shading right there.
Okay.
Kind of the construction, the dirtwork, earthwork.
And the idea is to get rid of some of the loops and the weaves?
Exactly. The idea is to get rid of the weaves, the loop ramps, and create the efficiencies, improve the safety, improve capacity. And here's actually those ramps that you're talking about. And then here are the flyover ramps from US-33 eastbound to northbound, as well as the US-33 westbound to I-270 southbound flyover ramps that will be constructed as well.
And within, that's, how many years is that?
The full construction is three years, but all of those phases, the first six phases, will occur in the first two years. So, the majority of the construction and the disruption is in the first two years.
And obviously, traffic will be maintained. When they do have to close the bridge, it will be in the evening for a short period of time typically?
The phase 2A and 2B will actually be the four-month closure through eastbound and westbound traffic, as well as traffic I-270 southbound to I-270. Have to go back.
Repeat that again. That's a four-month closure for eastbound, westbound, 33 traffic?
Yes, sir.
Not all day long period?
Yes, sir. All day long, all four months, June 8th through October 19th is what the construction document has in it right now. So, US-33 through traffic would be closed, traffic would be closed through traffic, as well as I-270 southbound, I'm sorry, I-270 southbound to eastbound, and then also I-270 westbound, or I'm sorry, US-33 westbound to I-270 southbound. I can watch. So, those movements would be closed through traffic for four months.
Okay. So, what are the defined detours?
I'm glad you asked.
Good question.
I think that's what everybody's here to listen to. Or what options of detours? I think I'd rather put it that way.
Right. Let me just jump back one slide. One of the greatest assets to a large-scale construction project like this, when you're trying to manage traffic, is to get people out of the area. In this particular case, one of the detour routes for truck traffic, as well as any other motorists that chooses to do so, will be to detour at US-36, as well as US-42 and out and around. And then all the message boards around central Ohio will also be posted in order to detour that truck traffic around the interchange.
That'll be interesting.
The logistics community usually will find their own detours and route themselves out around. This will just be one posted detour route. And for the US-33 through-traffic closures, for the eastbound, or the westbound-through movement, as well as the westbound-to-southbound-I-270 movement, the posted detour will be up and back to the Sawmill Road interchange and flip around and come back and continue on your movement. Additionally, similarly, for the eastbound movement, you'll have to detour south to Tuttle Road and back up north into the Dublin area. And if you're trying to make that move into Dublin, you'll also need to head south and continue back. Those will both be the posted detour routes for the 270-33 project. Local detour routes for Dublin citizens will be via Avery-Mirfield, Perimeter Drive, Emerald and Post, as well as France Road will be a heavily-used detour route, and also the Tuttle Road interchange, Warner Temple, Rings Road, and this portion of Avery. These will all be posted, local detour routes for traffic in Dublin. As part of phase 2A and 2B that is to occur between June 8th and October 19th of 2015, there'll be nightly closures of I-270 to remove the beams of the bridges and then place new beams. Those closures are proposed to occur one weekend in June, one July, August, and September of 2015. And the posted detour routes will actually detour traffic southbound out to Avery Road and bring it back down onto I-270. And then northbound traffic will be detoured along Tuttle Crossing Boulevard and north along France Road and back onto the freeway. Those permitted closure times are only to occur from Friday 11:00 to 6:00 a.m., Saturday 11:00 to 6:00 a.m., and Sunday 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m. All lanes must be open to traffic. So, in 2015, the earliest the contractor can close the interchange is June 8th, the day after the Memorial Tournament. And then they are supposed to all be open in 2016, as well as 2017. These other special events that we got from the Dublin Business and Convention Bureau are also listed in the I-270 Maintenance of Traffic Plan as events to avoid. And I want to kind of be a little clear about it. These are probably nine different weekends, and there'll likely be some conflict with these events. But what Dublin has asked for is 30 days' notice to coordinate with the event sponsor and coordinators and mitigate impacts. Okay, with that, I'd like to move over to the State Route 161 and Riverside Drive intersection.
More good news?
More fantastic news, you know? Before we jump into too much of the discussion about the 161 and Riverside Drive roundabout, I want to be clear that we are early in the final design process, and the standard for developing maintenance of traffic schemes for the project is to understand the elements of construction within the work zone, and then to propose the MOT scheme that best suits the design, as the design progresses. The design team and the program management team is doing just that and exploring different MOT scenarios, other than the one that is proposed to just provide restricted northbound and southbound through movements on the bypass lanes. Now, this is good news. This is a great project. It's just, you know, it addresses one of Dublin's major transportation needs. It opens up room for the park and provides opportunity for more developable land. So, this is an exciting project to be working on. The State Route 161 and US-33 construction plans are being advanced so that construction can begin as early as March of 2015 as well. The timeframes we will discuss tonight are based on about 40% plan development and assumes conventional build and bidding methods. So, specifically, no multi-shift or 24-hour construction is assumed, and no incentivized bidding practices are assumed as part of the project schedule right now. The State Route 161 and Riverside Drive roundabout is not an easy roundabout to construct. The roundabout center is shifted about 100 feet east, and the roundabout elevation will rise about four to six feet around the tabletop or the driving lanes, and nearly 10 feet in the center. In addition, existing water lines, storm sewers, electric, and communication facilities must be relocated, all of which must be maintained service during construction until the new facilities can be constructed and brought online. One of the projects that I would like to note that we are working to provide alternate routes for motorists in the area is the Dale-Tuller connector, as noted by this blue line right here. It's under construction now. The current interim schedule is to have this portion completed, at least with the intermediate surface course, intermediate course in place by the end of November.
And what's that going to help?
What is it going to? It's going to help traffic traveling westbound up Dale Drive and through the area up to Tuller Ridge and Tuller. And you can also come southbound, I apologize. You can come southbound along Riverside Drive, get on Tuller, back down Tuller Ridge, Dale, Dale, back. It's a relief valve. It's not a solution. Traffic, you know, it's not, we still need to provide alternate detour routes around the area to move people out.
Emerald 8 will be done?
Emerald 8 will be definitely in play. For the roundabout construction, the project begins with widening of the bypass, as well as some storm sewer work. At the 40% construction drawings, this portion of the construction is anticipated to last approximately two months. After those couple months of storm sewer and widening work on the bypass to maintain that restricted one-lane northbound and southbound movements, we will move into closing the intersection to all movements. This closure is anticipated to last for approximately seven months at this time. So, the two projects together is approximately a full construction season. The State Route 161 and Riverside Drive intersection, we are continuing to advance the plans. We are also looking at other maintenance of traffic scenarios. But I want to be clear that at most, those other scenarios would maintain one lane in each direction for eastbound and westbound traffic. It would be drastically throttled down, slower movements, narrower lanes. It would still require the roundabout to be closed to finish out the center portion of the roundabout. And we're about, we will, as we move through the design process, we'll evaluate it based on safety, timing, constructability, and construction duration. A phase construction would likely extend the project into 2016. Right now, due to the high level of finish, placing granite, being one example, is a lot slower than just, you know, putting in concrete curb, slip-forming a concrete curb. So, a lot of those things are driving some longer timeframes, even just for a full closure scenario with the northbound, southbound being in place. I think when I began working with the city of Dublin as a program management consultant, I thought there was no way we should be doing the I-270 and US-33 projects and the roundabout project at the same time. However, in our high-level traffic analysis, we're not seeing that. We're seeing that through-traffic is greatly reduced along 161, and that it's dispersed throughout the area based on the advanced detour signage throughout the area. Constructing these projects at the same time represents an opportunity to shorten the overall duration of all the detours that will be in play, of all the impactful detours that will be in play at the same time. For the 161 Drive detour routes, these are the likely detour routes. Sawmill Road would be a posted alternate, although you could go northbound, southbound, France Road, reoccurring theme with the I-270-US-33 interchange, Tuttle Road, reoccurring theme, Emerald. And, you know, these are just the anticipated posted detour routes. People will find their own way, so other routes may be impacted as well. Okay. Now, we have all these, you know, projects that are creating some regional impacts. And the Dublin Road South Shared Use Path is a project that we're highlighting because it was planned to go to construction in May of 2015 and requires the road closure of an important north-south route. It requires the closure of Dublin Road to perform the project. Although staff is working to accelerate the project ahead of the I-270-US-33 construction, unresolved property acquisition and utility schedules leave two very important schedule drivers in the hands of third parties. Property acquisition must occur before the utilities can be relocated, and the utility relocate will require three to four months without their own bidding processes incorporated into that timeline. Again, staff is working very hard to accelerate this project, and we will know if this project is feasible in the next couple of weeks for your next council meeting. But again, I want to highlight why it's important, is that the Dublin Road closure would take away an opportunity for a key north-south route through the city of Dublin. The Hard Road and Sawmill Road Intersection Improvement Project. The project normally would not be significant. We anticipate, all lanes are open to traffic. We anticipate that, all lanes are open to traffic on Sawmill Road. Hard Road has some reduced traffic conditions. The reason we're highlighting it tonight is because the I-270 detour that I talked about, the phase 2A, 2B, requires traffic to detour up through the Sawmill Spewee and back down. And some detour backups could impact that. So, we just need to keep an eye on it and make sure that it doesn't, and figure out how to mitigate it as it moves through construction. Bringing up, back up the same slide that Megan had up in the beginning. As we can see, there are many routes throughout the city of Dublin that are impacted. In 2015, many of the city's remaining transportation issues will begin to be resolved through some very important, exciting projects. And with the construction, there will be disruption. Again, these are posted detour routes that will be impacted. I think this slide demonstrates why we are here tonight. Typically, the city is able to develop its construction projects independently as there are localized disruptions. 2015 is certainly a different case. And the maintenance of traffic will be a community and a regional challenge. And with that, I'll turn that back over to Megan.
Okay. So, thank you, Mandy. We do have some key takeaways that we wanted to highlight to wrap up the presentation. First, for the I-270-US-33 interchange improvement project. It's a very complex project. It basically reconfigures the entire interchange. It builds new bridges, and that work does require closures. So, now that we're aware of the maintenance of traffic for that project, we're going to start sharing that information. And it really, really helps to have that information available because now we can take a look at the projects that Dublin had been planning and figure out how it all works together. As we mentioned earlier on, ODOT's plans are complete now, so they're starting to move towards the bidding phase. And the maintenance of traffic is established. Next summer, the next key takeaway, US-33 is planned to be closed to through-traffic from June, right after the Memorial Tournament, through October as a part of that project. And lastly, for this project, we're going to continue to work closely with ODOT, and we'll stay abreast of any and all changes. and we'll stay abreast of any and all changes that may occur and keep everybody updated on that project. As far as the 161 Riverside Drive Intersection Improvement or the roundabout construction goes, those plans, we're in the, we're in the midst of designing that project, so those plans are nearly halfway complete. Our consultants are in the midst of designing it. We're working closely with them to take into consideration and explore different alternative traffic scenarios. As of right now, the plan is northbound and southbound traffic will be maintained, although it will be at a reduced level. So that's important to know. It's, it's gonna be maintained, but it will be reduced. Eastbound and westbound traffic is expected to be closed for some period of time. We're still working through those details. We're exploring opportunities for limited east-west movements, but in all cases, those will be significantly reduced. And then lastly, by, by constructing the project in 2015 while the 270 and 33 interchange project is ongoing, we believe at this point in time, based on our traffic analysis, that we're able to take advantage of a reduction in traffic along 161, which will help in the long run. And then to summarize the presentation from an overarching perspective, we do have several key transportation construction projects that will, in the end, address many of Dublin's key transportation needs and it will result in tremendous improvement in accessibility for the city. These are projects we've been talking about for a long time. We're really excited to get to construction. As with the majority of transportation improvement construction projects, there will be impacts. And we're committed to exploring how we can best minimize those impacts or mitigate those impacts. We're exploring ideas such as twenty-four hour construction requirements for the contractor, incentivized bidding, and other maintenance of traffic solutions. And finally, we're working on developing a comprehensive communication strategy. And the strategy will be developed in compar, in collaboration with the city's community partners. These are just some of them. They include Dublin City Schools, businesses, Chamber of Commerce, and the list goes on. So we're excited to work with our partners to develop communication strategies, strategies that can get the word out to all interested parties. These communication strategies will include Facebook, Twitter, and other social media. And we also, because one of these projects is ODOT's and another one is in conjunction with ODOT and the city of Columbus, we obviously will be working closer, close with them and with paving the way. They're a great group that helps get communication out. So the communication plan will include many different elements, some of which are listed here, but the list does go on. So we're gonna engage stakeholders, have a ton of meetings, toolkit for local businesses. Like I said, the list goes on, communication, communication, communication. Can't communicate enough. And then in wrap-up, I'd like to share some of our next steps. As far as the 270-33 interchange improvement project goes, we've been working with ODOT and we're continuing to meet with ODOT to develop a communication strategy that will help the two different government entities work together to get the communication out as best we can. As far as the State Route 161 Roundabout and Riverside Drive Realignment Project goes, we're gonna continue advancing the design plans to the next phase of completion. The status right now is that the consultants plan to submit the next draft submission, which will be approximately sixty percent plans, in October. So we'll have more information coming October. And we're also investigative, investigating incentivized bidding. As far as the Dublin Road South Shared Use Path goes, we'll be able to make a timing on, or a decision on the construction timing for that project in the near future. As Mandy explained, we're working on land acquisition matters there and we'll know in the next couple of weeks as to whether we're gonna have enough time to get this project out ahead of the interchange or not. So we'll circle back with you in a couple of weeks. And then lastly, can't say it enough, but communication. So with that, I hope this presentation was informative and we thank you all for your attention. We look forward to collaborating as these exciting improvements are implemented.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Megan, and thank you, Mandy. It's clear to council, I know, and to staff that we've got intersections that are failing. So we really don't have any options. There is, to do nothing is not an option. This work has to proceed and it's going to enhance the, the area significantly as it goes through. We'll have some pain to put up with, but we're gonna have to work through it the best that we can. I don't know if council has any specific questions? Anybody?
I have a couple.
Okay, Amy?
I'm curious, you mentioned that the 270 east-west traffic closure or 33 east-west would be closed from June until October of next year. Is that the only period of time when that east-west movement will be limited?
Yes, that, that is the only period of time that that, the US 33 eastbound, westbound through movements will be limited.
So, that's really good news to me. I assume that we'd have things shut down a lot longer, I guess.
There will be other intermittent ramp closures, lane closures, but you will not have the
The major, correct, yeah, okay.
Excuse me, Amy, can I just follow up on that point because it's right in that area?
Absolutely.
You know, so some of the ramps will still be accessible. For example, eastbound 33 to 270 southbound, will that remain open?
No, the eastbound 33 to I-270 southbound will actually be closed during that four-month period of time. So it will be open the rest of the time.
You have to go down to Tuttle to get on if you're coming from that side of town.
I'm sorry.
Down Emerald Parkway and
Correct.
My understanding is that, my limited understanding based upon what you presented this evening, was the closure was for the purpose of widening the bridge?
Closure is for the purpose of removing and replacing and widening the bridge.
Right. So you have to come all the way west to that ramp entrance such that you can't even access that ramp?
Correct. If you were talking about, could you repeat the direction you were talking about?
I'm talking about eastbound 33, so from left to right to 270 southbound.
You will still be able to make that movement?
Thank you.
That's good.
I apologize.
Anybody else?
My other question, I, one thing I just find fascinating is that there is a benefit to doing these two huge projects at the same time. That is, that's fascinating and, and interesting and I think really good news for our community overall.
Yes, thank you very much for your presentation and I, it is, like you said and Megan has said and Marcia said and Mike said that we've been talking about these projects for as long as I've been on council and that's like too long, you know? So it's really exciting that we're doing it and we all know that anytime transportation projects come up, that there's pain involved in it. But in the end, just look at Emerald Parkway, when we finish that going to Tuttle Crossing. I mean, I know I've said a number of times, what happened to those cars? You know, it's just phenomenal how major infrastructure improvements can really move traffic so much smoother. I would highly encourage us, however, Marcia, to really look at the incentivization of the bidding methods in the twenty-four hour construction season. To the extent that these can reduce the timeframes that have road closures or detours to them, I think council would certainly want to look at that quite seriously. We know that all of this impacts our corporate and our residential residents and to the extent we can help them out during that, I would certainly want to look at that in, in favor of voting for spending a little bit more money in order to reduce the timeframe.
And a number of us have had that conversation with staff already. So we just need numbers so that we can determine whether that makes sense or not.
Well, and that's part of, as we continue to, to complete the final design as we get additional information. But we wanted to provide what we had now because we've been hearing a lot of questions and there's been a lot of misinformation out there.
Right.
And so the goal is to provide information as we get it. And soon as we get any updates on that, and the one thing too, we wanted to start with pretty much the worst-case scenario. So this, the seven-month closure is based upon current construction plans, how, how we normally do business. So that doesn't take into account some of the additional incentives that we'll, we'll look at. So we'll continue to move through the final design and bring back information to council.
Not to state the obvious, but it looks like we're gonna have a decision to make on Dublin, the Dublin Road South pathway as well in terms of the construction season?
Correct. We, I mean, the goal is to, we need to have Dublin Road open during this construction, so it's gonna be a matter of if we can get the final properties completed, the negotiation, and we can get the utilities relocated before we, so we can get construction completed around the same time as all the other closures happen next year.
That might be one we want to work on incentivizing more speed as well, because that'll be a really important
Exactly.
north-south connector for us. Okay. Anything, anything else?
Yeah, Mike, the only thing, I just wanted to kind of follow up on what Merrily and you have said with respect to incentivizing and the like. You indicated you're forty percent along now and you hope in October to be sixty percent along. Do you think you will have more options available at that time with respect to the incentives, incentives with respect to
Timing, yeah.
Timing and the like? You think you'll know more then?
Yeah, I think we will. We'll have a lot more detail as far as the construction sequencing goes and we'll have more options.
Obviously, I mean, I agree, it's, we need to get these things done, but I want to balance this with the, there's a cost with this too. And there's an awful lot of people that come into this town every day and we want to obviously take care of those, those people who work here and also those businesses.
You know, another important factor is the, the safety of our residents, the safety of our corporate residents, and the safety of those people that are working on these projects. And part of what we have to do is balance that, that, you know, getting the project completed along with maintaining the proper safety.
You know, Mike also wanted to point out that there'd been some emails going around about the need for a comprehensive communication plan. We've always had that. That's been a very strong point in the city of Dublin, so I'm disappointed that people even questioned that we weren't going to be doing that. But with, there's been a lot of construction in the central Ohio community with ODOT and other municipalities, and they've done a fabulous job really of communicating on a very regular basis, paving the way, as you stated, but all the radio stations and TV stations and the papers and all, every single day are putting out how to travel. And so I think that they're partners in all of this and they certainly will be communicating what our needs are going to be. Because these have been, number one, on lists of many people for a long time to get these roads done with the number of people that come through them, coming from Marysville and elsewhere to go into our community as well as other communities for work purposes and entertainment and all.
Yeah, and we've had meetings with ODOT regularly, ongoing, and there's a meeting this Friday just to focus entirely on the communications plan. So it is something that ODOT takes great pride in, making sure that they put out good information, as do we. So that's something that between our community relations staff and, and their public information staff, we will have a good plan.
I mentioned in an email earlier this weekend and I think it's something that we should really consider is once we know all the alternative routes, which, you know, we don't know at this point, but that they be printed on some kind of a, you know, hard, a piece of, not cardboard, but you know what I'm talking about, I can't think of the name of it, poundage like you're holding right now, right? And that we make thousands of them and give them to all of the companies and in this general area that are gonna be impacted, so they can give them to their, both their employees, but also to their customers. And this then is something the city would be providing to the people that would be most impacted by their people. It's, it'd be a lot easier, I think, to hand out something like that than to try to explain to somebody alternative routes of how they might get to your business.
Yeah, and something as simple as, and it may not seem simple if you're impacted by it, but the Dublin-Glick project that's currently ongoing, when we had the two-week closure on Dublin Road, that information was provided and it was our staff that, that put those maps and that information together. So we agree that that is important to be able to hand out.
There was even signage for the individual businesses, how to access Bakers, for example, because I was going up there and it's like, but what am I gonna do? Oh, here's where I go. And it was, it was really simple and appreciated.
Greg, you have some comments?
Yeah, thanks, Mary. The, you said that you'd maintain the north-southbound traffic on Dublin Road, right? Now, is that going down in that runaround? Riverside Drive. Is that down in the runaround? So that north-southbound traffic would not be able to cross the bridge? It's, so you're, there's two lanes that both go southbound now. You're gonna make one of them north. So you can't cross that, that bridge. That bridge will be closed.
As of right now, that's the plan.
Okay. And and if I understood what you said, Marcia, this bike path thing down on Dublin Road, that'll either be completely finished before these closures or we would wait and do it after these closures?
We, if we don't get the, the right of way and the utility relocation tied down in an amount of time, we will recommend it be delayed one year. And if we do get it in time, there's a possibility that there could be a little bit of time at the end of that project that there could be some overlap, but we would do everything we could to make sure that Dublin Road is open when the other projects are initiated.
Thank you.
Very good. It has our full attention. Thank you. Thank you, Megan. Thank you, Mandy. Brings us to the part of our schedule here for citizen comments. Walt, Mr. Mauer, I see that you've signed up.
Your honor, members of council and of city management, you remember that at the last council meeting, we were during this opening presentation and proclamation time overwhelmed by sorrow by that dear man who'd lost his dear daughter in a distracted driving accident. I myself, when I got to the podium, was disabled and told you I was gonna postpone what I had until tonight. So here it comes. Some of you, others of you are prorogues, toddlers, not even born, know that I've appeared at this podium for, oh, it must be around a hundred years. And I have give me a moment here. I have, tonight, I, you know that I've gotten into all kinds of things and that I broke each of you in to my, to some of my stupendous projects. But with not much more to show than glasses of water from Dublin Water. Anyway, this is not a, this is not a swan song. I'm here tonight, and it's interesting that we had, this is Constitution Week because I'm extending the Constitution. I'm here tonight because, because during the time I've been here, city managers have come, city managers have gone. Mayors have come by handful and mayors have gone by handful. And during that time, of course, it's no secret to you that I was trying to break you into my ideas and projects, et cetera. Well, I have one tonight. Because I was a citizen, am a citizen participant in government, I am, I think I'm qualified to, to pick possibilities for city manager. And I don't know any constitutional block to that, so I've got eight nominate, nominative suggestions that I'm gonna give to you. Three of them are outsiders, five of them are insiders. The first outsider was sort of suggested to me by our city manager, our gold standard city manager, our, our Google manager. When she said, when she announced her retirement here, that she was a little worried and wondered whether she might regret it. You will regret it. But but I have a compensating, compensating suggestion for you. This, and this gets to be my first outsider recommendation for city manager. I don't know how many of you watch David Letterman, but you know that he's retiring next year the way you are. And my suggestion is that you swap jobs. And that he will put Dublin on the Mac, on the map, I assure you. And you will have so many howlers of stories from your experience here with politicians and all these people that you'll have plenty of material to run on your own show then. So that's the, the first proposed city manager. Now, I'm going to move to the five insiders and then come back to the two outsiders. The five insiders in random order, which means alphabetical order. Are you ready? Are Ann Clark, Michelle Crandall, Angel Moa, Kristi Dardakia, Sandra Piskarsik. Okay, there are your five insiders. Two more outsiders. One could be One could be an African-American woman. The other could be an American Indian woman. Now, you'll notice they're all women. This, this is reflecting my change in political activity. I have come to the conclusion that the only way we can get the planet out of its wreckage is by electing women. And we need to get fifty-one percent of women in every government, from city to national. Because, um, you know, men are, are arrogant. Uh, they, they, they exaggerate their conquests.
We need to stop you right there on the arrogant.
No, I want to hear the rest of these!
I, I don't want to hear anymore. This isn't going well. But we, we'll, stay tuned. We'll, uh, hear the rest of it next meeting?
Next time.
Next time.
You bet.
We, we have a long meeting. We've got more speakers. Thank you.
We'll have fun.
As always.
It's on women, I think. Call me a ladies' man.
You bet. Uh, Mr. Mr. Gil Salem signed up to speak. Are you here? Please come forward and state your name and address. If you just give us your name and address, then you can address council.
Gil Salem, it's five hundred South Front Street, Suite eight hundred in Columbus, four three two one five. Uh, I, I'm here today, uh, to appeal to the council. Who's the famous person last week that passed away? I think on Thursday. Joan Rivers, yeah, I know. Brian Arsenault is the famous person that passed away last Thursday. He was our latest and most recent deceased soldier that passed away over in Afghanistan. It wasn't Joan Rivers, it was, uh, Brian Arsenault. And the reason I'm here, uh, I, I made a couple of trips, several trips for that matter, out to the Veterans Park that we have here. And, um, it, it's in atrocious condition. Um, I've taken pictures on my cellphone. I don't know if I can approach and show you guys the pictures, but, uh, it's...
We actually have a whole cadre of pictures in, um, in our CIP program. We addressed this the other night.
Pictures that you have that, sir, are, are the ones that, after everything's been power washed and cleaned?
We have the before and after, but we also know that there's significant work that needs to be done there, and we are budgeting for that, and we, we have our eye on it, believe me.
That's all I'm asking for, sir. I, you know, I went out there today.
I agree.
And, and, you know, I, I saw, um, flowers put on one of the, uh, the, the bricks, and I, I looked at it, and the soldier was killed in action in Iraq. And, uh, for this mother to go out there and have to get on her hands and knees and with her tears probably have to wipe, you know, that brick off to be able to read her son's name. Half of the bricks you can't read because there's, there's dirt on them covering the names. Um, it's deplorable.
We're in absolute agreement, and we are working towards, uh, getting that rectified. I can assure you that all the council has their eye on this.
Okay. That's all I'm asking for.
Well, we appreciate you coming, coming forward and pointing that out, and stay tuned, because you'll see some changes there very shortly.
I hope so.
You bet.
I'll take you up on that, and I'll be back, because I'm going to be checking all the time to make sure that it's okay. Because, like I said, I've got a brick for my son out there as well, and I, and, you know, I, I think it's something that all of our, our veterans deserve, and, uh, you know, just to have the dignity to have, to be able to look at their bricks.
Pretty much, most of us here have family, uh, represented there in those pavers as well, and we're in total agreement. We'll get it fixed. Thank you.
Hey, Mayor.
Yes?
And just to tell you that I brought a brick.
Example.
That shows how to seal those bricks. And, uh, so that, I know the artist was very sensitive about the fact that, um, she really wanted it all natural. And, uh, we were outvoted in their attempt to fill these in, and then the next suggestion was we darken the bricks. But the real solution to this is to fill them in with an epoxy that seals them and also protects them from freezing thaw. So like the letters A that are struck or E, they won't pop out when the water settles in them, and they'll be totally legible.
Sure, I understand where you're coming from, and that makes sense, and it probably will work, but not the way that you've got, I, I'm not an engineer, and I'm not blaming the park manager or park and recreations manager at all. There's nothing that can be done if you have it designed the way that you do with the sand walkway and the sand around the side. If it rains, you're going to have, uh, you're going to have the, the names covered. If it, uh, if people just walk, they're going to be kicking up sand, not intentionally, but they're going to be kicking up sand, and it's going to cover up the names. So even if you have it blackened, it's still going to be difficult to see the names. I mean, short of just paving everything.
Why don't we get you a copy of our staff report, Marsha, because it addresses all those issues that you just raised. We're aware of it. We're working on it. And I know one of the fixes was even to perhaps replace all the pavers, and we're looking at that as well, and, and the sand piece will be fixed.
That would be wonderful.
We appreciate you coming forward.
All right, sir.
Thank you. Okay, we have, uh, another speaker, Jennifer Brunner. Welcome. You want to state your name and address for the record, please?
Thank you. Jennifer Brunner, thirty-five North Fourth Street, Suite two hundred, uh, Columbus, Ohio, four three two one five. And, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, my statement will be brief and low-key. I looked at your logo, "Where Yesterday Meets Tomorrow." The last time I appeared before this council was fourteen years ago, and the purpose is simply to introduce myself to you all and to those who are seated here today. I served as your Secretary of State from two thousand seven to two thousand eleven, and as a common police judge, uh, from two thousand to two thousand and five. In fact, uh, your council member Greg Peterson succeeded me, and I've worked with Mary Lee on projects as well, and with Steve Smith, uh, who's been longtime city attorney here. Simply wanted to make sure that you were aware that I will be on the ballot this fall, that the folks in the audience could get a face with the name, uh, for the Tenth District Court of Appeals. And, uh, interesting to hear the things that are happening tonight, because many of these issues do end up before that court, which reviews the decisions of the common police court, and also in which original actions against, uh, government bodies can be filed, especially state government here. So I have, uh, three children who've gone through, uh, Waterson and Kilborn, uh, two grandchildren, and now one husband, thirty-six, uh, thirty-six years. And, um, I've, uh, been a, an attorney in private practice for seventeen, and I just wanted to make sure that I had a chance to say hello to the community, and I thank you all for the public service that you give to this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brunner. Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda. Any council member have any item they'd like to be removed? Hearing none. Is there most approved the actions for the five items listed on the consent agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
Anne?
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Ale?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Genesee Zurgar?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, second reading, ordinance seventy-eight dash fourteen.
Adopting a two thousand fifteen to two thousand nineteen five-year capital improvements program.
Ms. Muma? No, that's not Ms. Muma.
Sorry. I tried, I tried to pull it off, but I couldn't.
Welcome. I didn't, I need to look before I speak.
Uh, good evening. Um, ordinance seventy-eight fourteen authorized the adoption of the city's two thousand fifteen to two thousand nineteen capital improvements program. Uh, included in your packet, uh, is a memo recapping the, the CIP and, uh, as a result of, of the August eighteenth, uh, workshop. The first year of the CIP will incorporate, be incorporated into the two thousand fifteen operating budget, and with that, staff recommends approval of seventy-eight fourteen. Can answer any questions if you have any.
Uh, Mary Lee, as finance chair, do you want to weigh in?
Right, I just wanted to thank everyone for coming to the, uh, CIP meetings and for the staff's, uh, great presentation and, uh, the format that you used. I think it's self-explanatory. Um, we made some very minor changes this year, uh, which are contained in the memo, uh, that was prepared by, uh, the staff. So I, uh, suggest, uh, moving to approval at this point.
Questions? Tim?
No, I just wanted to thank staff for all the responses they provided. Thank you.
I, I had just a quick question on AR fifteen oh one, on the memo that we have, talking about the park renovation, lack of lighting. It says from Dublin Kaufman High School to Killalaya. Um, that pathway runs from Emerald Parkway. I'm not really sure it's from the high school. We're talking about the same pathway, correct?
Yes, I believe that is the pathway they're speaking of.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that we were clear on that. And then, there's a, uh, there's a diagram here in the back on the, uh, proposed dog park and the dog park location, which we had spirited discussion about. I don't know where I saw it.
It's, uh, right here. It's on page nine.
Okay.
After your eight.
The, um, oh, yeah. So you're showing the Wallace property there, and I think the Wallace property consists of approximately fourteen acres, as I recall. That, you've, you've got an insert in there. That says a two-acre dog park, and it comprises the vast majority. Is that just out of scale, or help me understand that? That's...
Um, yeah, the, the, uh, land that we did acquire was approximately fourteen acres, so, I mean, we can take a look to see if that, apparently, it, it doesn't look like it's to scale, but we can take a look.
It looks to be ten acres. I just want to make sure the, the scope and scale. Could you revise that for us?
Yeah, we'll make sure that we...
At the next meeting, if you will.
I mean, the intention is that it's not, not that large.
Yeah, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that, uh, we weren't making a dog park out of the whole project there. Okay, so, no other questions?
I wanted to ask, um, obviously about the street maintenance and the Marion Longview and Grandview Drive. If we might consider putting that into a year. I was, I noticed that, um, there is maintenance that is programmed that is a hundred and twenty-five dollars a foot. And I, I left my, my math sheet home, but, um, if we take that hundred and twenty-five plus the fifty feet of, um, or fifty dollars a foot that we would spend in sidewalk, that would, um, bring the cost down to about three hundred dollars a foot. And so that would be, um, you know, a way to get this project accomplished and then also save some money and not go to the trouble of doing the maintenance that, um, you know, when we have the chance to do the improvement.
Well, I think one, one of the things that, at staff level, we've discussed the issue of all of the other non-curb-and-guttered streets in the city and how we address that issue. And the fact that if you do one street or one area, it's going to raise issues with regard to the other areas. Also, in this area, they, they want to have curb and gutter, but they don't want to have sidewalks, and that's a concern. Our preference is that if we put in the curb and gutter, that it also would have a sidewalk in the area. And the other option that we, we have talked about is the, uh, because the, the properties were acquired under a non-curb-and-guttered street, that we would, the city would then be making improvements to the individual property owners, and we can look at the option of a special assessment in order to do those improvements. So that's something that we would recommend that we look at and evaluate if that's something that council would choose to do.
Let's be clear, we still had decisions to make on this. This, this was information, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and we probably want to get to an information point before we do maintenance in, in, I think, to Amy's point. In early two thousand fifteen. We'll have discussion about this at another time.
We can schedule some type of workshop or discussion with council with regard to the, the overall city issues.
Council, anybody want to?
I would appreciate more information on that, and then that'll also give the neighborhood a chance to discuss sidewalk versus no sidewalk.
Yeah, I, I think we can start off with some information and then take it from there, uh, as to whether we need a workshop or what have you, but, uh...
Thank you.
Along with Amy, I'd like to see, uh, what the, uh, cost is, and also, I, I know that staff has raised some issues with respect to some neighborhoods, uh, presently do not have curbs and sidewalks. Frankly, some of those were designed that way, um, but, uh, I think there's a lot of issues for us to, to consider.
It's not just cost, it's policy decisions that this council needs to make, uh, citywide.
I get that, but I just don't want this to be forgotten. I think that's part of what Amy's saying, too, is that...
And that was my point. I just wanted to keep it.
So you have direction?
Okay, we'll, we'll bring information back. Thank you.
And I wanted to ask a follow-up question about the dog park. I had a couple of calls on this, and I don't get, uh, for another meeting or a memo or something, it'd be fine. But I don't, um, now that I look at it more, I don't understand how parking and everything would be accomplished through there. And so I'm not sure that I really support that that's the best location for a dog park. Uh, because it's going to generate even more traffic in an already highly trafficked area with the high school being down.
Yeah, and, and the issue of dog park, CSAC is looking at the issue of that and where locations may be. So there's additional information that we can bring back with regard to that as well.
I think that sentiment was pretty much held by many council folks, so...
Right.
You've got direction on that, too?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else?
So by approval, uh, tonight, with respect to the dog park being included in this, we're just merely approving the money, not necessarily the location.
That's correct.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that.
Yeah, otherwise, maybe it wouldn't vote.
Anne?
I'm Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Genesee Zurgar.
Yes.
Ms. Ale.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider.
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance eighty-six dash fourteen.
Amendment chapter thirty-five stormwater management stream protection. The Dublin Code of Ordinances to be in compliance with current Ohio Environment Protection Agency regulations and to create an exemption area for a portion of the Bridge Street district and to make other various minor revisions.
Ms. Cox?
Good evening. Um, ordinance eighty-six fourteen will update the stormwater management and stream protection regulations. Um, the first two revisions to highlight are within the exemption portion of the regulation. Um, first, we'd like to increase the exemption area for the minimum change in the impervious area. The current code has a limit of five hundred square feet, and this has proven to be restrictive as we've managed this code over the last several years. So we'd like to increase that minimum to, um, two thousand square feet. This will allow minor site improvements to happen, um, that will not have a negative impact on the overall stormwater management of a site. Um, we do keep track of the minor ones that we look at, so that if there is kind of an aggregate larger, that we make sure that the sites look at that as well. Um, the second change is an exemption that we are adding for the Bridge Street district, and, um, this has two pieces to it. On the west side, um, we're adding an additional water quality element, um, in order to protect the water quality of the North Fork, South Fork, um, of Indian Run as they become the Indian Run. On the east side of the river, we're proposing an exemption to the quality, or, no, excuse me, the quantity control for a portion of the district directly adjacent to the river, essentially up to about where Tuller Ridge Drive and Dale Drive will connect from there down to Riverside Drive. That area won't, um, be required to do quantity control because it's so directly connected to the river. We want to get the water out before the detained water upstream comes through. There is, um, a map in our stormwater design manual that outlines the very specific areas that these exemptions are allowed. Lastly, we need to clarify the application of the stream quarter protection zone. The purpose of that section of the code was added several years ago to apply to those areas that do not have FEMA designated floodplain and floodways on them, so that we still have an element of stream quarter protection, because the creek just doesn't end where FEMA, um, designated floodplanes end. And we're also provi- providing, um, some minor edits to the erosion system and control requirements to be in compliance with the Ohio EPA's, um, general construction permit. The highlights. Answer any questions?
Very good. Thank you. Council?
You answered my question about the control.
Mr. Maurer?
This is, this is one of the most astonishing pieces of legislation I've come across, and, you know, as I said, I go back quite a ways. Um, it, in contrast to the, um, raw fault finding I seem sometimes to engage in, I found in this ordinance, I've been touched and moved by sensitive concern for the protection of wildlife. I also used to underscore misused language here. By the way, I members have been, it sounds patronizing, but members have been splendid for the past several years. And I take no credit for that, but they've been gotten even better and better. So this is, this piece has, um, precise and subtle definition of terms. You can tell I'm reading something here. I didn't want to miss anything. It's a modeled piece of legislation.
Thank you.
Great. Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion, council? Not one vote on ordinance eighty-six fourteen?
I'm Ms. Ale.
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson? Ms. Genesee Zurgar?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
And Mayor Keenan?
Yes, thank you. Ordinance eighty-seven dash fourteen.
Authorizing the city manager to execute necessary conveyance documentation to acquire one point five acres more or less fee, simple interest from Judith R. Margaroly and Enrico Margaroly, and, and declaring an emergency.
Marsha?
Yes, th- this property, uh, is immediately to the north of a parcel that we purchased last year from John Kilbury at one ninety North High Street. Um, and what we're looking at and doing here is continuing to extend the parkland along the Scioto River, which has been a longstanding city council goal. And it also ties in with the land that we've acquired over the last few years with regard to, uh, the parkland on both the east side and west side of the Scioto River. And the other thing in, uh, that makes this parcel acquisition, um, a benefit to the city... to the city is the fact that the house sits currently in the floodway, and when we build our future bridges, the pedestrian bridge and the John Shields Parkway Bridge, there would be mitigation impacts that the city would incur as part of the construction of those projects, and at this time, we're... The current owner will continue to be a tenant in the property, similar to what we did with Mr. Kilbury last year, and we are asking for adoption on an emergency basis this evening so that we can close as early as tomorrow.
This is definitely consistent with council goals of aligning the riverfront there and gaining the property to have pathways and so forth, so any questions from council?
Motion to act as emergency.
Second, Anne on the motion?
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Saley.
Yes.
And on the ordinance?
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Yes.
I'm Mr. Leckleider.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Ms. Saley.
Yes.
Ordinance ninety-eight fourteen?
Authorizing provision of certain incentives to Dublin Building Systems Inc. to induce Command Alcon Inc. to retain an office and associated operations and workforce within the city, authorizing execution of an economic development and real estate purchase agreement.
Mr. Clary?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you. So, there's nothing of note that's changed since first reading, but what I'd like to do is give a brief recap of the project, take your questions, and then also, we have a representative from Command Alcon here tonight that I'd like to introduce to you. So, to recap, Command Alcon has been in Dublin for twenty-two years. They currently employ seventy people and plan to grow to eighty-five. The growth has caused a scenario where their current facility no longer meets their needs. So, after we conducted a real estate search, as you know, we concluded that no existing building stock in the city met their needs. So, in an effort to keep Command in Dublin, we structured the deal that would be permitted by this ordinance to include land as a means to induce a competitive new-build scenario. And as you know, this deal is structured in a way that differs from previous land transfers in that the land will be transferred to the developer. So, what we did to ensure that the land function directly as a job creation and job incentive or job retention incentive was to put several mechanisms in the real estate purchase agreement that basically held all the parties accountable, including the fact that the actual lease will be an exhibit to the agreement. And additionally, DBS and Command Alcon have been completely transparent during this process as we've had the ability to look at their numbers as the project has gone along. So, I'll take any questions or issues that you have at this point.
You want to introduce your...
Sure, I'll have him come to the podium. This is Mark Marino. He's the vice president at Command Alcon and been someone that we've worked with throughout the life of this project.
Welcome, Mr. Marino. Do you want to give your address for the record, please?
Five-one-six-eight Blazer Parkway, Dublin.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would like to thank the city for getting creative. I understand this is a unique scenario for them. Alcon isn't the best-known company in the city, but we've been in Columbus for forty-plus years and in Dublin for over twenty, so I'm a resident of Dublin, and I'm very happy to keep our business here if we can pass this.
So are we. We're glad you're here.
Yes, could you explain what the company does?
Yeah, yeah, no problem. We do control systems and software systems for construction materials. Ready-mix concrete is really our special niche, so all the concrete plants around here have our systems in place and our dispatching systems, and we ship internationally, so we ship product all over from Dublin.
Very good, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other council questions? One vote on the ordinance?
Ms. Saley.
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Good, thank you again. The ordinance ninety-one dash fourteen?
Authorizing provision of certain incentives to induce a company to locate an office and associated operations and workforce within the city, authorizing execution of an economic development and real estate purchase agreement.
I'll introduce it. Ms. Gilger? You're not Ms. Gilger, Mr. McDaniel?
We're just messing with you, nightmare, sorry about that. So, staff has been in discussion with Columbus 2020 and a company from outside the Columbus region regarding a multi-state competition for a large data center attraction project that's interested in the city-owned land within the West Innovation District. So, just as a very broad overview at this first reading, staff proposes an economic development and real estate purchase agreement for council's consideration as a means to induce VA Data Inc. to invest in, establish, and potentially expand operations within the city, providing significant value to the city's emerging information technology cluster and serving as an additional anchor to the West Innovation District. The proposed economic development agreement and real estate purchase agreement includes the transfer of a city-owned land for the purpose of constructing data center facilities. The total value of the land incentive is approximately $6.8 million. Additionally, the city proposes a 10% performance incentive on employee withholdings paid with a maximum value of $500,000 over ten years. The city proposes to extend public water and sanitary sewer to the site via a new entry road. This infrastructure will also serve additional future development sites in the immediate area, and will bring forward at a later date a tax increment financing ordinance to help facilitate the city's construction of public improvements, many of which that I just mentioned. The State of Ohio Tax Credit Authority already approved state-level incentives at its August 25th meeting tied to this company and its potential location within the state of Ohio. This will also include infrastructure money that will help defer some of the costs of the infrastructure that I mentioned, and that will come to the city should they... Should we pass this and they execute this agreement. The company will create full-time equivalent employees, contractors, and construction workers at the site in addition to investing in the construction of new facilities, equipment, and fiber optic infrastructure. The facilities associated with this project will be built out over time, so as a risk-mitigating tactic, the city will require certain site preparations within the first year, a reconveyance option of the land if construction does not go as planned, and/or a payback formula for the land should the company not finish constructing a certain amount of square footage of facilities within the prescribed timeframe. So, staff is of the opinion that this project will serve as another anchor tenant in the city's West Innovation District, as I already mentioned. It has the potential to attract and create an information technology supply chain, continuing to solidify Dublin's position as a leader in this business sector. The project will bring a significant investment in facilities, equipment, and critical infrastructure in the form of fiber optics and broadband infrastructure. It will also provide well-paid career opportunities for growing technology workforce jobs. Finally, per the zoning already in place, this site and the project match both the visions of the Dublin Community Plan and the plan set forth by the West Innovation District. Staff considers this project to be the highest and best use of the land under consideration. So, staff will be recommending that council pass ordinance ninety-one dash fourteen by emergency at the second reading public hearing on September 22nd, and will request waiving the thirty-day waiting period. We do anticipate some changes to the economic development and real estate purchase agreement prior to the second reading, and we'll be sure to point out what those changes are prior to you considering at your second reading and public hearing. Be happy to answer any questions you might have this time, thank you.
Any questions, council? Okay, so we are going to... The hearing now, there's going to be a second reading, public hearing on September 22nd at the September 22nd council meeting, at which time we'll declare an emergency and pass, and that is to waive the thirty-day wait? Okay, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance ninety-five dash fourteen?
Authorizing the city manager to execute necessary conveyance documents to acquire a 0.367 acre more or less permanent easement, 0.102 acre more or less permanent easement, 0.012 acre more or less permanent easement, a 0.172 acre more or less temporary easement, and 0.179 acre more or less temporary easement from Metro Center Owners Association Inc. at the property located on France Road for relocation of overhead utilities underground along France Road and declaring an emergency.
I'll introduce it. Thank you, Mr. Hammersmith.
Members of council, you have before you this evening the fourth of five needed utility easements along France Road necessary for the burial of overhead utilities and place them underground along France Road. This evening, we're talking about Metro Center Owners Association. They own property located both north and south of Metro Place South. We are acquiring both permanent and temporary easements from this property. We have had amicable negotiations with the property owner, and for the appraised value, they are agreeable to this acquisition of these easements. Staff recommends this evening that council dispense with the public hearing and adopt this ordinance as an emergency measure. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Council, anybody?
I'll go ahead and move to dispense with public hearing and treat it as an emergency.
Second. Thank you. On the motion?
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Ms. Saley.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zerker.
And on the ordinance?
Mr. Leckleider.
Yes.
Ms. Saley.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson. Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Yes.
Thank you.
Two yeses in there, didn't I? Thank you. Ordinance ninety-six dash fourteen?
Authorizing the city manager to execute necessary conveyance documents to acquire 0.026 acre more or less permanent easement, 0.031 acre more or less temporary easement from Roslyn Jane Turner and Lawrence K. Watkins for the property located at 15 Longview Drive for construction of a shared-use path as part of the Dublin Road South Phase Three project, declaring an emergency.
I'll introduce it. Thank you, Ms. Grigsby.
As mentioned in the title, this is one of the property owners that we need to acquire easements from for the Dublin Road South by path project. This is earlier this evening. We talked about we had three properties left. This is one of those three, so after this property owner executes the document, we'll have two to complete, and the appraisal was $8,050, and we agreed to a negotiated amount of $8,850, and we recommend adoption this evening by emergency action.
Thank you. Any questions?
I'll move to dispense with public hearing and treat it as an emergency.
Second?
Second.
Okay, on the motion?
Mr. Leckleider.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Saley.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Yes.
And on the ordinance?
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Saley.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
And Ms. Janice Zerker.
Yes.
Okay, we have... We have any other?
No.
And we have staff comments?
Just one comment. There was the memo in your packet with regard to temporary signs and that the staff has put together potential amendments to the code related to the temporary signs, and unless we hear other direction from council, we plan to proceed with presenting that to P&amp;Z for their review.
Council, have any questions?
The only comment that I would make, and it's not really a question, but on the last page where you show the temporary sign windows, sign requirements, the four square feet, it seemed to me that if you were driving down a road, you really wouldn't be able to see four square feet, and so I don't know whether the locations of this type of a sign is typically when you're pedestrian walking really and not for vehicular sight.
Good evening. Most of those signs that you see there would be the ones you'd be right up close.
Okay.
Next to, they would...
I thought maybe that was the case, but just want to clarify. Thank you.
Good. Anybody else? Tim?
Yeah, if you can help me understand, is it theoretically possible that a sign could be erected at a site in perpetuity? I mean, it may be smaller than it is in the first year, but it could exist there forever. That's my understanding of mine.
Theoretically, yes.
As long as there's vacancies and they pay the annual permit, right?
Each year they have to renew the permit.
Yeah, so... But if there's no vacancies, we could enforce and have the sign removed. Would that be accurate?
Yeah, as I mentioned in memo, the earlier memo, the difficulty that is trying to monitor that on a day-to-day basis and then knowing when leases may be expiring within a short period of time after that. We get a lot of building owners, for example, say, yes, I'm full now, but I've got leases that are expiring in a month, and therefore, I'm trying to lease up ahead of that and so on.
Yeah, I, you know...
It's a difficult issue.
Yeah, I mean, I struggle with this. I mean, it's certainly in our interest, you know, to have space filled. I mean, you know, without question, you know, but it seems contradictory, you know, to have these signs...
Permanently temporary.
You know, permanently temporary, exactly, thank you, as some of them are, and seem so contradictory to, you know, our sign culture. Anyway, I don't know what else to say about it. Thanks.
I agree with you, Tim, and that was why I brought this up in the first place. I, you know, I think it's very contradictory to our community appearance and, you know, sort of our culture, but, you know, I guess I don't have a better idea other than, you know, somehow making sure that these things...
Moral suasion, perhaps, making a call to the developer or what have you if they do not have a need for it?
I mean, I think that's true if they're really filled, but, I mean, I totally feel the same way that is being expressed, and I've become more conscious of it since we've been talking about it, and there's just for lease signs everywhere, and I'm afraid it's the Economic Times that created that problem. But then, when we're told we have 1% vacancy, it's hard to understand then why we have all these signs up, but at least I felt that this was a better option to reduce the signage size so we don't have those giant signs that really are really horrible in appearance to have forever and ever. I don't know another...
I guess I'm hopeful, and, you know, we had different points of view, you know, but, you know, with respect to, you know, what is it, what attracts the attention of potential less ease, and I guess I'm hopeful that, you know, there's some technological advance, you know, someday that eliminates the need for these signs, that, you know, there's a means, there's an app for that, you know, if we just...
I'll get to work on that.
Yeah.
What's interesting about these signs is if you look at all of them, they aren't just marketing that there's space available, but it's marketing the landlord or whoever it is that owns the property.
Absolutely.
I mean, we all know the logos of every single one of them because they're plastered all over these signs. There's no way to control the content where... I think that's why they're leaving them up, because it's an advertisement for their product as opposed to their location.
That is exactly right.
Is there any way we can control...
No.
That kind of message, where if they're really putting up a for-lease sign, they make it just say for lease with a phone number. They wouldn't want that sign in front of their building because it's not attractive, but if it's got, you know, their logo and their brand all over it, then it, you know, sort of advertising them as an entity, not just that location. I wonder how many... I mean, if you're going to lease a 3,000-square-foot office, are you really going to see a sign and call it? You're going to have a broker that's going to know where the vacancies are.
There is an app for that. It's called the internet, and it's really effective.
Right, that's what I thought, but you raise a good point. I mean, in essence, it's a billboard, you know, which, in other places, have been outlawed anyway.
Okay, I think we could beat this up all night.
I think this is a step forward, and we've brought it up, and now let's continue to figure out better ideas.
Very good. Council committee reports. Amy, do you have P&amp;Z report for us?
Yeah, I actually do. As I shared with you all in an email, we are going to talk about cementous siding, have a discussion. I carried the message to P&amp;Z last Thursday that council was very interested in limiting the amount of cementous siding on our future buildings in the Bridge Street District and our desire to learn more about the product, and so I think staff already was planning on this discussion, and hopefully we'll have even more of a discussion and hopefully some product on display. John Hart, one of the commission members, is really, really knowledgeable about this, you know, being an architect, and he referenced a specific product and then sent me the... And sent the rest of P&amp;Z this website, so I would encourage everyone on council to go to the website, look at the products, and try to envision, you know, how they might work or not in Dublin. And then also, you know, if you have time to stop by and look at the products that are on display or hear the discussion on Thursday evening, I think that would be useful as well. If not, you know, I'm sure we need to have a discussion here at council as well. And then also, you know, with regard to the process of...
Excuse me?
Sure.
Is that going to be at the outset of the meeting?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, it will be at the beginning of the meeting. We'll begin the meeting with the cementous siding discussion. Thank you for making that point. Also, with regard to the Sure.
Is that going to be at the outset of the meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it will be at the beginning of the meeting. We'll begin the meeting with the cementous siding discussion. Thank you for making that point. Also, with regard to the process that we briefly discussed earlier, I think that the sooner we come to terms and understand for ourselves how this process is going to work, about getting sites and buildings and projects approved, you know, council's role, P&amp;Z's role and so forth, the more clarity that we have, the better for us, the better for the developer, the better for planning commission. It's just, I think, really important to get that figured out, and so that we all have a good understanding of that. And, you know, this discussion that we're having about cementous siding, I think, is representative of that. So other than that, we just had a couple other projects that we discussed briefly, and it was a relatively quick meeting. That's all I had. Thank you.
Marsh, you may want to give us some ideas of how we might accomplish, what the points that she made there with respect to clarity and bringing everybody together.
And we'll provide information back to council. It'll, you know, I think one of the things we talked about is having workshops that would bring in the developers and their individual projects to go through the principles of what the economic development agreement would be for each individual project, and make sure council's comfortable with the city's participation in the project and what the project's about. So we'll look at getting together information that we need to have presented, and then also get some potential dates that we can have workshop meetings.
Very good. Rick, admin committee?
Yep. At your desk, you should have a copy of the city manager recruitment profile. I want to thank Sandra and her staff, and also Heather with all the, what I believe to be the fine work that they did. Also, I don't know, Mike, if you wanted to bring this up, but I noticed we have our proposed 2015 regular council meeting scheduled. I assume we're to look at this and talk about it sometime soon.
We can, we just received that in this packet, so why don't we take a look at it at the next meeting, and everybody has some ideas on that. Kathy usually led that discussion, so we can give her a call in the interim.
Okay.
Could I have a follow-up question? The only thing that, on the profile, the city manager profile, I thought that council had requested that we not use the picture of the Bridge Street District that doesn't really exist in our community, and yet I see it prominent on the first page.
What I understand is that it was taken from a full page to partial, to accentuate the Bridge Street process, so there are other photos on there, but I don't know if you have any other further explanation?
Well, I guess that, to me, it shouldn't be prominent on the first page, you know, it's not a reality.
Yep.
We don't, that's the whole discussion that we had as a, as a complete group, that, you know, it's a vision, it's.
I mean, it's based upon whatever council's direction is, we can, we'll make the adjustments. And I know one of the things that, that we've talked about is the fact that we wanted to make sure that it was known the priority of the Bridge Street District, that we can look at different options for pictures on the cover.
And Merrily, I'm aware that everyone, including myself, I didn't want to put something on here that doesn't really exist, but at the same time, it was our minutes and everything else talked about our priorities, where to point out to whoever this individual, these candidates are going to be, the importance of the Bridge Street corridor going forward. So it was sort of a balancing, it was, it was a full-page picture, it was now brought down to a smaller picture, but if it's the pleasure of everybody on council, I'm sure we can get that removed.
It is something that they're going to inherit, it's going to be a big part of the, a big part of the job, so, I mean, I think it's important to highlight it, whether it be on the first page or another page, but it definitely needs to be prominent, at least in my view. Anybody else? Is everybody okay with what's there, or do you want to make a?
No, I think, you know, I agree with you. I think the new city manager is, that's going to be the ma, one of the major efforts to that person, so I don't see anything wrong with leaving it up there.
Okay. Then, anything else on admin?
I don't.
Anything on community development, John?
No, we're all squared away.
Merrily, finance?
No.
Amy, public services? And let's see, do we have any other reports? I don't believe we do. We'll go to council roundtable. Mr. Peterson?
Thank you. Just two quick thank yous. I had the opportunity of interacting with our staff at my own house the last couple of weeks. Chief Chuck Sterling came out and did a fantastic job on the situation that I had. I really appreciated the way he dealt with the situation, was professional, he was thorough, he was efficient. I very much appreciated the way he handled it. And Megan, Jeremy Cooper was out. I had another ongoing situation over the last couple of weeks. Jeremy Cooper came out, addressed our situation professionally thoroughly, and leaving for work in the morning at seven or so, I would see him in his City of Dublin car, driving around, tending to all of the various issues with the project. He's a very committed, competent, professional employee, and it's good to remember that those employees are who our citizens generally interact with on a daily basis, not all of us, and they're the ones that are the experience that, that our residents have with the face of the city, and those two employees are exceptional, and I thank both of you for them.
Thank you, Rick. Amy?
No.
Thank you. Merrily?
One question and then one comment. Someone told me in the last couple of days that the children's hospital here had closed. Is that true, or, I mean, I was surprised to.
You know, I think it is. In my situation, actually related to ending up at children's hospital, they closed the urgent care there. They moved the urgent care over to the close-to-home urgent care at the hospital. It's still a separate children's hospital urgent care, but as I found out, because I went there first, they said, they gave me this little card and said, no, you need to go over to the hospital.
Dublin Methodist.
So it's that Dublin Methodist hospital?
It is.
Oh.
And they might want to prove.
They might want to communicate that a little.
And it was tricky getting from, from there over in the parking lot, trying to find which door I was supposed to go in. The signage wasn't great, but I think that's probably what it is. They just relocated the urgent care.
We can follow up on that and see if there's something we can do to help get information out.
Thank you. And then I wanted to just make note that at your desk, I've put these orange wristbands. You may have seen in the internal newsletter a couple of weeks ago that the, you all know Molly Steiner, who is the Dublin Wellness Coordinator, and her daughter, who goes to Kaufman High School, has been diagnosed with leukemia. And so they were selling these at the high school in support of her and in support of the research and all, and so I asked Ann if she would purchase these on behalf of council. So that's what those are about, and we certainly wish her quick speed in recovery, and our prayers are certainly with Molly and her family. Thank you.
Thank you, Merrily. Tim?
I noticed in our packet there was a letter from the Government Finance Officers Association recognizing our budgeting process and calling out staff, and in particular, our Director of Finance, Angel, who apparently is celebrating this evening. So anyway, you guys can pass along to her, you know, that we recognized her, but, you know, thanks to Brian and all of the staff that contribute to this budgeting process. I don't know that council takes it for granted. I mean, I know every year as we go through this, you know, I'm impressed by what is produced, and so, you know, congratulations. Thanks, that's all.
Thanks, Tim. John?
Just two things. One, having served with you gentlemen on the Veterans Committee, and then the constant problem with the erosion of people's names, and, you know, the consideration that limestone is a sedimentary stone, and it's relatively soft, and there's been a lot of people have mentioned that these markers that we've charged people $300 for have slowly been eroding. So what I'd like to suggest to put an end to this is, and I'll just pass this around, here's the, I think we suggested this at the original meeting to do this, the artists suggested know that they love the very subtlety of all the gray and everything. And then the next suggestion was that they come back with just shadowing the letters, which wouldn't be foolproof. So what I'm suggesting is that we buy an infill, whether we have to buy all the bricks over again for $10,000 or infill them, and do it correctly. What the infill does, and if you want to pass this around, it protects the letters, like freeze thaw here with the water lying and the Es and the As that pop out the center parts of the letter. This will protect them, and the water will run off of them, so it'll be more of a permanent legible display. So I would like to suggest to council that we look at doing it this way, because this is really how it's done on a lot of these professional fundraisers and memorials. The other thing I'd like to bring up is the, and I'd like to promote this, because when we had the National Police and Fire Olympics here, it was really a huge endeavor with people coming from all over the country and Canada, but I never felt that we had a lot of support for it and a lot of people coming out to watch the athletes in action. So I'd like to, just tonight, mention the Australian Football National Championships coming in October on the 10th and the 11th and the 12th, and I'd like to encourage anybody to get on the Internet and watch these people play their variation of football, which is very physical, very violent and very interesting. So they're going to allow us, I guess, to go see these games for free, and a great opportunity for the people in Dublin and greater Columbus to come see some really good sports, so.
Good.
That's all I have. Thank you.
John, let me follow up on your, on the Veterans Park. I wonder, when we talk about alternatives, and I don't know if that, if you're just showing us the black letters and not necessarily the brick, but I know there are, are there not issues with radically changing what's there? Do we have issues with the artists? Is that copyrighted? Is there some kind of?
Well, there are certain things that we'll have to follow up to make sure that we don't violate anything that's in our agreement with them, but we'll follow up.
Does it require permission then to make those kind of changes?
We'll have to look to see, some things do and some things don't, so we'll have to follow up.
Because it occurred to me, if we're doing that, one of the things we might want, I don't, the, the material that they're going to put on that sand base, the walkway, that just simply is not working, and I'm not sure drainage fixes that. You get a heavy downpour, that's going to move that sand around. Is there another surface? Should we pave it? Should, not pave it, but put a stamped concrete or, or even, even some sort of grass and maintain it? I don't know what it is, but I would like, I'd like to look at those alternatives, because I don't think even putting a particulate on that sand is going to fix that problem.
Well, and we've, we've been talking about this for a while, the last couple months at least, and looking at what some options are, and there are some issues about some storm, water drainage issues that we should address for the long term. I think that's one of the first things, because when you look at the pictures.
There's elevation change there, significant.
Yeah, that's, that's an issue. So we can look at what that means versus what some of the other options are. So we will look to see what, what is the most appropriate thing for us to do, and if we have to go back to the artist to get some type of approval, we'll, we'll work with her on that.
Yeah, you know, we always seem to run into problems with artists.
I know.
When you get to the technical part of the project, there's always failures and more expense to repair them. And I think, you know, as a unit, we're going to have to be much more upfront, making sure that their technical knowledge and their expertise in engineering, and in this case, civil engineering, you know, putting a side drain next to that thing, you know, because of the cross.
Lessons learned.
Yeah, and so, you know, it's like these things, because I can remember us suggesting doing this, and the artist saying, oh, no, you're going to ruin my project if you guys do this.
Well, I wonder if you even do stone on that pathway, and maybe as part of this, it could be a limestone piece, it'd probably be expensive, but at the end of the day, you could even carve the engrave right into what would be the walkway.
Yeah, there's a crosswash that's taking all the gravel down, and I think that could, that thing could be diverted, and there's a number of different ways to do it. If you're ever hiking on Alpine Path or any kind of path, like the Appalachian Trail, they run a crossriveler across that, so when the rain comes down, it catches it and directs it off into the lawn. And so there's a lot of pretty simple solutions to this, but.
It's clear that there's strong interest of council to get this, so we'll look to your, we'll look to your help in getting us some options, and then let us have a discussion on it. Okay.
That'd be great.
Thank you, Megan.
We recently shared the pictures and video of the path with the artist, so the art,